All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Hello?
Thank you for making it out tonight. Really appreciate you being with us, especially with some of the icy weather out there. It's great to see democracy in action. It's my privilege to call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for Monday, January 22nd, to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Cheesam, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
Last week, we celebrated the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. As Dr. King described in some of his writings and speeches, the Greeks have three words for love: Eros, or romantic love; filia, love for family and friends; and agape, the love for fellow humankind, including those with whom you may disagree, someone very different from you, or even someone you might consider an enemy. The key to agape is recognizing humanity in and expressing compassion for others. In Royal Oak, neighbors step in to provide blankets, shovel sidewalks, stock food pantries, or give money to someone in a time of need to help each other. That is agape. As we live as a community, may we carry this love for each other in our hearts and take good care of each other. Let us do our work in ways that reflect Dr. Martin Luther King's focus on agape. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that very relevant, relatable invocation, Commissioner Cheesam. Nice job. All right, that brings us to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy? We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion on the agenda presented in front of us tonight. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to public comment. Before we start, just a couple of quick comments about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful, the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. It's often better if you email us, because ahead of time, we can think and talk and converse and help us make better decisions up here at the table. Please note, we typically don't respond to public comment or the questions asked. However, we are taking notes, and when that topic's up, we'll ask those questions. If your matter or question is not something we're going to talk about tonight on the agenda, our interim city manager is taking notes, and I highly recommend that you drop off your information to the one, the only, the bright, the amazing Judy Davids, our community engagement specialist, and she can get you an answer. It's one thing to ask a question, but if we don't know how to get back to you, it's kind of, you know, hard for us to close the loop there. So with that, who's first tonight? Mr. Ashley?
This looks like gift commission.
I can't take bribes, Mr. Ashley. No, I'm just kidding. You can. Yeah, we'll get one for Shar, too.
What I'm giving you, Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor, this represents our 50th anniversary birthday, which was December 27th. That was when the last screw, light bulb, and switch was put in, and by spring, all the apartments at Royal Oak Manor were full. So that's what this is. There's a little lariat for everybody. I like to say that I have been at Royal Manor for seven years and enjoyed it, even though I have argued with you guys many, many times over many things. I just like to say, I walked here. I do have a broken hand. Coming through Centennial Park, where people have knocked down snow, it's in the sidewalks, and it's getting slippery, and what we're coming, it might want to be salted. It's kind of dangerous out there on Centennial Park with all the snow knocked down. But other than that, thank you, commissioners, for supporting Royal Oak Manor and $9 million renovation. Some of you have been there, most of you, I think, have not, but some of you were there. Anytime you want to take a quick tour, we're always available in the office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Mr. Carter? I was going to call you Mr. Royal Oak.
Al Carter, 618 Detroit Avenue, Honorable Mayor, esteemed City Commissioners, I'm here to save the date for March 16th, 2024, at 12:00 p.m. We're bringing back the Royal Oak St. Patrick's Day Parade. Super excited to do that. All of you are invited, and as tradition in St. Patrick's Day parades, we always love our politicians, so please save the date and try to make it. It is tradition. We'd love to have you, and we appreciate that as well. We did get one decline, and that is from President Biden, who was invited, and I'm sure the chief's glad that he said no. He's a little busy, but we did invite the president. Unfortunately, he cannot make it, so we're relying on you guys to represent us. So thank you, and more to come. We have a flyer and some more information coming soon, but I just wanted to make sure you guys save the date for your calendar.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you very much.
Do you still have unpredictable weather in store for us that we can't quite gauge?
We are going to do it, no matter what. It's going to be the best weather ever, March 16th. I just got that feeling. I'm optimistic. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al. All right. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name's Greg Morgen Taylor. I am a resident at 906 Fernwood Road. I've lived there for, going on, 11 years. I'm sorry to bring this to you. I appreciate your comment about putting it in email form, but I have addressed this several times, and so I'm here tonight just sort of as fun. I thought it would be interesting to address you all and let you know. It seems embarrassing to me that I have dirt roads on Crane between Forestdale and Lockwood, and I understand that the policy as the homeowners on the four corners are supposed to all agree to pay to pave those roads. And that's fine, and that's never going to happen. But in Royal Oak, it seems strange that we have to endure the residents of the area, the dust in the summer, the children that live on our street, the health conditions that go on. It seems odd that we wouldn't pave those roads automatically. We grate them twice a year, and so I've lived at my location for 10 years, so I've seen those streets graded 20 times. Could we not have paid to have them paved by now? Almost certainly. For what we're paying to have them graded, I think so. I'm just putting that out there. I don't know how many other dirt roads there are in Royal Oak, but it seems odd that we should have dirt roads. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Going once. Going twice. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table, and we're going to start with item six, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Everyone's looking at Commissioner Colo. Commissioner Colo, which one would you like to pull off this time?
G.
J. Okay, G. So that's approval of expenditure spring 2024 tree planting program.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion for the consent agenda with the exception of G? Commissioner Macy makes the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion on the items? All right, with none. Oh, Commissioner Colo?
Yeah, just really quickly, the Department Committee, recommendations are on this. We have two new committees that are starting, so I just want to thank all the people that came out. The committee actually sat last week and heard public comment from all the people who want to be on some of these committees, so it was a great process. Thank you, everyone who came out.
Yeah, that's good. We're finally starting to get a little bit more engagement of interest in our committees. For a while there, people were hesitant, given a lot of the political climate out there, to, you know, it's a thankless job. So it's good to see people out there petitioning to be part of the democratic process, and thank you to the Appointments Committee for your hard work, because I'm sure it wasn't easy picking through all those applications. I'm sure a lot of very good, qualified people. But for those who didn't make the cut on some of it, there's always a role out there, so keep looking. All right, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're going to leaf G to Commissioner Colo. Go out on a limb here. See what he wants to talk about.
Yeah, receptive audience tonight, too. I know you do this all the time. Mr. Filipski's here. I just want to talk a little bit about this program. I know it's amazing, we plant 800 to 1,000 trees a year, so I just wondered if Mr. Filipski can give us a quick update on the thought behind the maltrees you selected this time and what's coming up in the fall?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Foreign Affairs, City Commissioners. So the reason this particular request is limited to what's remaining in the budget for this year. So we planted a little over 500 trees in the fall. This 300 would get us to our 800, which is kind of our typical goal, and so this ask is just limited to what we have in the budget. That said, though, you know, every time we do one of these programs, we reevaluate what worked, what didn't, how it strains staff, how we can best achieve what we're doing, and we came to the realization that in the spring, we're very busy with keeping up with parks and mowing, and there's a lot of other activities. And when we were trying to do 500 in the spring, it became a little onerous, and so we've decided that moving forward, we're going to do 300 in the springtime and then 500 every fall. In the fall, it's usually when things slow down, we have a lot more staff availability. So rest assured, we still are hitting our 800, and where there's possibilities in parks, we can try to shoot beyond that. But 800 is where we've landed after the last several years, and it's a little bit more than two-to-one ratio for trees that are removed.
We have a lot of silver maples coming down, but we're putting a healthy mix of solid trees that will be there for generations to come.
That's right.
At a two-to-one ratio. Commissioner Herzog?
Do you track how many of those trees that you plant each year survive?
Yeah, we have a list of warranty trees. I unfortunately don't have the numbers in front of me. They're not astronomical. There's always a share of warranty trees. Typically, they die out within the first season, within the warranty period, and our experience with the vendors so far has been great. They've unquestionably replaced the trees.
Mr. Cheesam?
Can you just talk about any, like, resident education that goes along with when you give them a tree to help, you know, enhance the survivability of those trees?
Yeah, we've produced flyer, and I believe we had a hanger, a door hanger, so when the tree does get planted, there's some instructions about establishment watering, what's expected of the homeowners, who to contact if they have concerns or issues with it, and it seems to be working pretty well.
Good.
So door hanger made from another tree, planted out here for this year.
Recycled papers, certainly.
All right. Commissioner Colo?
Just thank you, and I'll move approval of this item.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesam? All right, discussion?
Looks like we got to the root of the problem.
We did. We did. No one's cutting him down on his dad jokes. Oh, man. All right, no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Filipski. All right. All right, that brings us to item seven on our agenda, which is a proposed amendment to the Royal Oak Code of Ordinances to establish a local officers' compensation commission, second reading.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Good evening. On the agenda for your consideration is the second reading of the proposed amendment creating the local officers' compensation commission. Even though there was a unanimous vote of approval last time, we were short one member, and thus we had to bring it on the regular agenda, so I misspoke because I assumed it was going to be on the consent, but had not realized that we were short one member. So other than that, there has been no changes between first and second reading. The ordinance has remained the same, and we're asking that you consider adopting the resolution on second reading.
Questions? Just wonder who that person playing hooky was. Probably should be censured or something. Yeah, I wasn't here. I understand the debate. I put judgment in my peers and my colleagues here. I got some mixed feelings on it, but I'm willing to see what will happen with it, so I'll support it this time around. There's some convincing arguments made that I did not think of. All right. Anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Hunt, second? Commissioner Herzog? All right, discussion? None? Okay. With none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to eight, which is proposed amendment to the Royal Oak Code Of Ordinances to amend marijuana regulations, first reading. Mr. Krasowski, I imagine this is you again?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda for your consideration for first reading is a proposed ordinance amendment that basically cleans up the code of ordinances to match the zoning ordinance, which specifically provides that the commission may consider approving requests for temporary marijuana events. There was some other small cleanup language that is highlighted for your review in the proposed ordinance, and subject to any questions, we believe this brings clarity and uniformity between the code and the zoning ordinance for these types of proposed marijuana events.
Questions?
Bless you.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that there's nothing on the agenda tonight about any kind of event that would use this change in ordinance. We're just looking at the ordinance change tonight. Is that right?
That's correct. All before you is the cleanup language in the ordinance to make it consistent with the zoning ordinance and fix a couple of minor typos that I found in the original ordinance, but there is nothing on the agenda asking you to approve any event. This just gives you the opportunity, consistent with the zoning ordinance, to consider that. Doesn't force you into that, just that you have the opportunity to look at it.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to clarify also that all this is also, it sounds like this just brings in line the ordinance with the practices as we've seen them going forward based on the zoning ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this is changing the status quo within how we operate is just making sure that all our ordinances are aligned?
That's correct. There was a bit of a small discrepancy between the zoning and the ordinance. State law and the administrative rules allow you that privilege of considering those events, and that's what the zoning ordinance, which generally is the controlling ordinance in those regards, so we're just bringing that code section into conformity with that ordinance.
So the two gears are grinding a little bit, and now we got a smooth transmission.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Colo makes the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, item nine, award of contract Dickinson Park tennis and basketball court improvements. Mr. Fideli?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Fortier, City Commission. Excuse me. So the Recreation Department, as part of the fiscal year budget, 2324, had $200,000 allocated to renovate one of the city's tennis courts and basketball courts. RFP was published in October, and the bid results came back December 6. The initial bid request was to have a concrete surfacing and a special sport tile that would allow these courts to be multi-purpose, multi-sport. We have two of these court tiles, one at Lawson Park and one currently being built at Hudson Park. As part of the bid itself, proposed alternates, the alternates were a substitute surface, asphalt, and then color surfacing, painting the lines using court paint for these tennis courts and basketballs, which is most commonly seen in outdoor tennis, even indoor tennis courts and basketball courts. So with that being said, the bid amounts for the base bid came in $200,000 over the budget amount. So the lowest bid was $469,000 and some change. The add alternates came in over $100,000, with the lowest add alternate tallied up to $126,000 and some change. As part of the other capital projects for the Recreation Department, there was $934,370 worth of total projects. Some of the projects have been expensed and have a remaining balance, and there are some projects that have not yet been expensed, mostly just waiting to see what these results would come back for the tennis courts. For this particular project, I am proposing to postpone the Memorial and Warden Park irrigation system project, using a portion of the Upton Park soccer field development. That portion would be $12,000 of that $75,000. And then using the remaining balance that has not yet been expensed from the projects, the batting cage tunnels at Memorial Park, and then the bicycle racks and repair stations to cover the difference in budget amount and the amounts that were bidden. I'm recommending to go with, or to award the bid to Warren Contractors in the add alternate amount of $179,212.50. Warren Contractors was the selected vendor to work on the Lawson Park upgrades. Lawson Park upgrades include renovating the baseball fields, adding fitness equipment, the play structure that's, and then also the basketball court, which has the sport tile. And they also, as part of that project, did Franklin Park, which included renovation of Franklin Park's tennis court play structure and other restoration for that park. So the, I am very satisfied with the work that Warren Contractors has done at both sites. They are familiar with the work of renovating basketball courts and tennis courts, and it's, there's something to be said to have sort of familiar and a good working relationship with the contractor, especially when putting in these sport amenities and sport courts.
Okay, questions? We'll start with Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Fideli. Okay, so the sports tile is the option you're not picking, right?
Correct.
Okay. Sort of confusing because it says add alternate, but it's actually less, right? Like, the added alternate is less than the base would have been?
Correct, and the add alternate includes just the asphalt instead of concrete, and then the coloring, so just the paint of the courts.
So it's just about, the change between the two is just about the court surfaces?
Correct.
Okay. The first time I read this, I thought it was the 200-plus, the 100, and I was confused, but I should have, if I had done the math, I would have figured it out. Okay, so then my next question is, so some of these things that are not expensed were leaving, and they will, in fact, happen, right? The ones that you don't mention?
Correct. So postponing the irrigation system, we would use all of the $90,000 for that, but the other projects that are listed, we will still tackle during this fiscal year.
Okay. And then what does it mean to take $12,000 from Upton Park Soccer? So it said, you know, the budget is 75, and now it's going to be 63. What does that mean practically for what that happens?
Just the scope of work would change, so we would still renovate Upton Park Soccer Field, but we would just have $63,000 to work with rather than 75.
And so can we get this? What can we not get?
I'm actually quite confident we can get everything that I had intention for that.
Okay, so it's pencil sharpening we think is happening there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then for this batting cage tunnel and the bike racks, so we've spent some money. We don't have a batting cage tunnel, though, right? So why have we spent money on?
The equipment is at DPS. We have to install it in the springtime.
Okay, so this would have been for the installation?
We purchased the actual material, the equipment, and then we'll have staff install the batting cages. They consist of netting and then eight poles, so essentially, it's just a net over eight poles.
Okay. So I guess I'm just confused, like, we had budget 70, and it only cost us 25?
So the actual purchase of the equipment was...
I mean, it's okay if you don't know.
2024, some change.
I mean, the point is, we're still getting the batting cage tunnel? We just don't know if we have any left over?
Yes. We have the batting cages currently at the yard at DPS, and we also have the bicycle racks and the repair stations at DPS that are all going to be installed in the springtime.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question, is we aren't actually not doing any of those things? We're still doing them, it just cost us way less than we thought?
Correct.
Right. And then further question on the bike racks, is I thought that there was a grant that was involved with the bike racks? Is that true, not true?
There may be. This is just a separate item outside of the grant.
Okay. I was just making sure it worked. Spending our grant money somewhere, we shouldn't be spending it. All right, I think I now have a grasp of what it is. So we gave rid of the, we're not doing the irrigation systems this year. We could, may or may not do that next year, and then we're going to sharpen our pencils on Upton Park Soccer Field, and then the batting cage tunnel, the bicycle racks, we just saved money on, and then we tie that all up, and we can do the less expensive option at Dickinson.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question about the irrigation at Memorial Park. Is that, was that irrigation planned for the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial in that area, or is this more for the general ballfields there?
So both projects were for the general ballfields.
Okay.
Initially, what that project was is to create, they call them quick connect systems that go into the ball diamonds. In the summertime, when it doesn't rain, those fields turn into concrete, so what these quick connect systems would do is they would just water the fields, soften them up a little bit, just for the field to play, but that project can be postponed to future...
And if we need, like, if things get bad or whatever, we can still use the, you know, bring the old hose and sprinklers out?
Yes.
And do a manual?
Yes, there's already a water hookup out there, so it would just be a matter of, you know, hooking up a residential sprinkler head and watering the fields.
And that's the same for Warden with the fields there?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wasn't sure if this was tied to the Memorial or not, but it's all ballfields. It's understood?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I mean, down the road, it seems like it would be better and more efficient to have an irrigation system, but at least, you know, we're not going to have, you know, we have alternatives.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that Commissioner Macy, some of Commissioner Macy's questions did kind of help with my, I was a little confused by this amount, and what we're getting and what we weren't getting. So when you say something's been expensed, that means that we have purchased it, we might not have installed it, correct?
Correct, we have, we purchased the equipment, we have it on site, we just need to install it.
So then when it comes, looking at the Upton Park Soccer Field, I could tell you, my kids have played at that field quite a bit, and it needs a lot of love. And I know we have something like 4,000 kids that play soccer in Royal Oak, so I have a hard time sharpening pencils on this. Have you, have we bid out this project yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So I guess I'm a little concerned about taking money away from that if we haven't bid it out yet, until we see a scope on what this might be and what that bid comes back at, because if that bid comes back... Because if that bid comes back at, you know, 200,000 over, maybe we're not doing tickets to the park, so we could do Upton Park, right? So when is the RFP going out for Upton Park Soccer?
There is a turf management company called Seymour Green. I've reached out to them, talking about fertilizing, reseeding Upton Park's grass area that we would use for the soccer field. They have come back with a preliminary estimate of about $20,000. I have asked them to come back in the spring so that way they can actually get a good look at the field when the snow melts. So I will be putting the RFP out mostly in March.
Wait, I'm sorry. You ask a company to come out and look at it, but we're going, they gave you a price, but we're going to bid it off. What's, why, why did the company look at it? What was?
I just want them to have a better chance to look at it in depth. They, when they came out, there was some snow on the grass, and I want them to get a better understanding of what the actual scope of work is to rejuvenate the area, regrow the grass, make it a stronger turf for soccer activity.
So that if we bid this in the spring, it'd be completed, would this be completed in this?
It'd be completed this fiscal year, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because it probably would have to be planted April, right? I mean...
Yeah, so it'd be planted in the spring. The scope of the work is conducive to be done in the springtime, when the prime season for growing grass and the wetness of the spring, et cetera.
Okay. And if that comes back at 90, what's the plan for that? Let's say that comes back 15 over. Let's say, I mean, you estimated 75, your budget is 75, but if it comes back at 90, would we delay different projects or what's, because presumably we have to, if we miss the spring window, we can't do it.
Right, yeah. So we would look at delaying another project, so... We look at delaying another project.
Do we have a project on this list that could be delayed? I mean, just looking at them, we're taking all of that extra money right now and spending it on Dickinson. So I guess if it goes over, is there an option? Yeah, the answer is no, that's fine, too. If you're going to ask us to go to the general fund, it's, you know, Parks and Recreation is highly used in this community, and that's fine, just want, just want to make sure there's a plan here.
Yeah, there's a current vendor looking at the park drainage, so that could be a potential project where we can pull a little bit of extra funds out of if need be. If there are no available funds, then it would be an ask to the commission for additional funds to cover the difference for Upton Park.
And then that drainage project, presuming, I mean, we, a lot of our parks flood every year, so...
Correct.
Have you, do you have a scope, desire for that, or can you elaborate on that a little?
So the scope of that is, this is where the vendor comes into play, is finding solutions to, I won't say the word dump, but not dump the water into our sewer systems, but find an alternative solution to displace the water that seeps into the ground and to help avoid any sort of flooding of our parks. So that's where this particular vendor is looking at the possible ways to disperse the overflow of water rather than dumping it into the sewers.
And then has that been bid also yet?
Not yet. Right now, I'm just trying to build out the specs so that when it does go out to bid, I have all the information needed.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just chime in with regard to your question about, you know, what the contingency would be if the Upton Park soccer field development was too expensive. John and I had this conversation, and you can correct me if I recall it incorrectly, John, but the original estimate for that, we believe was far higher than what we had, you know, we were kind of guessing in the dark when we put the CIP together, based on what we heard from Seymour Green and their basic scope of work and their preliminary estimate of $20,000. John seemed confident that even if it were going to be higher than $20,000, it would be within the range of what we have available in that balance. And so there are contingencies, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, at this point, you're confident that the Upton Park can get the improvements without having to water that down to any extreme degree. So I think in part it comes down to an overestimate on that project.
That's correct.
I just had a clarification from Commissioner Macy's, one of her questions. So the surface that you're recommending, the add alternative, it is not multi-purpose or multi-use. Is that right?
The only way it'd be multi-purpose or multi-use is just painting multiple lines on the court, whereas this sport court tile, think of it as like a puzzle, where it already has the lines on it, so you're potentially just putting the puzzle pieces together, whereas these lines would be painted.
And is cost the reason for your recommendation?
Yes.
It's purely cost?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
So it may be purely cost, but the Parks and Rec Board is not as gung ho about the sports tile as John is for this use. So I think where it is at Lawson Park, where it's like a basketball court and it can be multi-surface, and it's good for that purpose, I think, but we were a little bit skeptical about the tennis court use of the surface, especially for the additional added costs. So, but I wanted to say, like, if we're concerned about moving this money around, which I think is a fair thing to be concerned about, just want to remind us that we did approve an additional budget resolution this year of $300,000 for the purposes of Parks capital improvement and senior services on a one-time basis. So that's $300,000, and as far as I know, we have not used this year, and it expires on June 30th, 2024, so just putting that out there.
Is that not part of the 934?
No.
Okay. That would be good information, yes.
Thank you.
So when we look at the resolution, this is just an award, but then the further resolution here says the city commission approved staff recommendation postponing Memorial and Warden Park irrigation project using those funds, 12,000 of Upton Soccer Field, which it sounds like there's contingency in that estimate versus the 12,000, like we might not be getting thrifted on that anyways. And the remaining balance of the project expense to cover the $173,700 difference. So if the question is if we have, I mean, we talk about delay, that's kind of a, is that one day? Is that 90 days? Or is that a, say, hey, for today's purposes, it's a delay, but we can regroup to see what's of that 300,000, or if we have other areas where even Upton comes in way low, you know, we can come back and say, is it delayed or is it just we're finding through savings or other mediums, new sources of funding to get them done? Like, I don't want to say it's like permanently delayed and then we have a, you know, we're under. I mean, these are CIPs that we planned, right? And...
I would say any CIP that moves into the next fiscal year will be reintegrated into that year's CIP, so...
But I was saying, there might still be a chance that, it says delay, but there could still be a chance that we'd move, that we wouldn't have to delay, let's say, the irrigation at Warden Park if we have 300,000, according to what Commissioner Macy's saying allocated, or if we get a grant, or if, you know, Upton Park comes way under and then there's a little bit of funding out of the general fund. But what you're saying is to, you're setting expect, when you say delay, we're really setting expectations that these are really at risk of being pushed out till the next fiscal year, but if we can still fit them in this fiscal year, based on the physics of how stuff will ultimately shake out, it's a possibility.
I agree with everything you just said.
Okay. Commissioner Collo.
Yeah, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, I think often we don't, you know, that's a line item in the same budget line, right? Which is something we don't typically vote on, that, you know, we vote on spending projects. Delaying something, not, you know, moving from one sub-budget line to another budget line seems out of our typical area of operation. Now, we approve projects, we, but to move, to say that we're going to delay Warden, delay Memorial, Upton, et cetera, that seems to be a minutia that we wouldn't have to vote on. So if we're inclined to pass this tonight, I think the first be resolved is the only one that we would have to vote on.
Yeah, and I think it's like, good warning, like, hey, this is a potential that these things might not be able to be done, so I think it's good to have it there and to call it out. But you've hit on my concern, like, if we say, go ahead and delay, now we're giving instruction to delay when that might, even if it's a 10% chance or 100%, or 99% chance, it's still not an inevitable, at inevitable point. So I would think what would happen is, if we did the first, be it resolved, the second one, we don't have to take any action other than those projects will come back to us and you'll have to make a recommendation to say, hey, we're going to do, it's kind of the same language, the same letter, and just say, we recommend at least making sure we get this one done, and it could impact these other ones, and then we just kind of work through the priority list. That's how I would see it going. Because I don't want to give confusion, like instruction to delay if there is still a possibility we could get them done. Commissioner Macy?
Love where this is going, and I wonder if we could just ask Mr. Fidelli, you know, to come back to us sometime soon and say, you know, hey, I still don't know where we're going to find the funds for this. You guys want to shake loose some of that 300,000? Should we ask him to see if there's money out there, and if there's not, can let us, let us know? I'm afraid if we don't, I agree with what everyone's saying here, but I'm afraid if we just let this go, then the only way it comes back to us is when we finally approve the changes to the budget lines, which will come.
Yeah, how about when you get the, maybe when you get the next RFP in? You know what I mean? That would be a good time to take a look with a new plan with the potential 300.
So we still want them to do RFPs for all these, right?
Yeah, I would say so, because it may be, you know, you may get an RFP that's like three times more than what we estimated, and it's just, it's moot, it's gone. And then you may get one that's like, hey, you know, through the process, we discovered an ability to do some value engineering, and it's, you know, below what we thought. So I think, I think it's a little bit of an iterative process. Mr. Gortowski.
Since you're working on the resolution and kind of revising what's been presented to you, I would suggest and recommend that there be a further resolve that authorize the man, mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, if you approve the agreement with Warren Contractor and Development.
Oh, so the first be it resolved?
Yes, and maybe that's the second be it resolved that's added that authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign on behalf of the city, and then, then the third is what you're talking about revising.
Or we're not doing it at all, or just skipping?
That's fine.
So someone could make a resolution right now for, take the first be it resolved and be it further resolved to allow the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement?
Authorize it.
Authorize the agreement with, yeah. Commissioner Macy?
And move approval of the first resolution paragraph and this presented to us, with the addition of be it further resolved, the city commission authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract. He wasn't even listening. He doesn't know if I did it right or not?
Who? Me?
He gave me a thumbs up.
Okay. Collo? Commissioner Collo?
I'll give you a thumbs up, too. I'll second it.
You were distracting.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy, a second by Commissioner Collo. And that language is good? Mr. Gortowski? Okay. I said execute, I think he has a different word, but I think he's...
Authorize the mayor...
I said authorize, but I asked to execute, so who knows?
Authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city. I think that's what you said.
Yeah, she did say.
Then that's great.
To be clear, I'm the executioner. That's why I'm always here, many minutes after you guys leave signing contracts, because you do this to me. Okay, discussion on this. Commissioner Collo.
So I'll just add to the conversation about the CIP, like, I hope to see at some point presented to us, maybe a non-action, I don't know, maybe manager update, but an update on where we are for the rest of the projects for the year and what the plan is to get them done. You know, the CIP is a wish list, right? I mean, I think build a new community center is still in that, and I don't think we would want to go out and just start getting bids for building a new community center without having too many conversations. So I'm looking forward to like the new revamped CIP next year.
Anybody else? All right, call for the vote. Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. And we'll just let the rest of the memorandum here expire with the further resolve. Good? He's good? All right, no other motions? Good. Thank you, Mr. Fidelli. Do you, clear as mud?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Commission.
All right, good. We like to make it confusing and difficult, so...
I'll be bringing back more projects, so...
Please do. Thank you. All right. That brings us to our last item on tonight's agenda, which is the approval to establish parking rates for the 2024 Winter Blast Festival. Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission. As you may know, Winter Blast is coming, and not to be confused with the Winter Blast from last week or this week, but the official third Royal Oak Winter Blast will be occurring on February 2nd through the 4th. That's not this upcoming weekend, but the following weekend. And last year, we implemented a change in how we handled parking with going to a flat fee system in our surface lots and our parking structures on the way in, and that really created a much better experience for customers visiting the festival. There were not any backlogs as people were leaving, especially during peak times. And so we're proposing, again, a similar arrangement with a $5 flat fee, that is a $2 increase from last year's fee, but that will be charged exclusively at the 11-mile parking structure, the Center Street parking structure, and the surface lots that are around the Civic Center campus. Parkright, who manages our parking structures, will be managing both the intake of dollars in our structures and our surface lots, and once their expenses are paid out, the remainder of the fees go into the automobile parking system fund. So with that, I can answer any other questions you may have about this, this request for a rate change.
Questions for Mr. Fenton. Whoa, all righty. Commissioner Hunt, then Commissioner Macy.
I just had a question about the language. It indicates that in one of the resolutions, that it's for the $5 flat fee for entrance per vehicle per visit, and that was the same as last year, right? There was, weren't any in and out privileges per day last year?
That is correct.
So this is all the same as last year with the exception of the bump.
Aside from the dollar value and the dates, it's the exact same verbiage from the last year.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
So I think I heard you say the service lots around here, but I don't think it says it here.
It needs to be added. We actually were discussing that before the meeting about whether that should actually be added, and I would say for the safety's sake, if this amendment is moved forward to clarify that the parking lots around the Civic Center project are part of the $5 flat fee.
It is adorable that you still call the Civic Center project. Clearly, it's ingrained in your brain that way.
It's never over.
So, okay, next question. Are we allowed to do that on the surface? Isn't at least this lot part of our contract?
Pre-existing.
It is part of the pre-existing MBS contract. The lot is not fully online yet, and so that is why we're able to move forward with the $5 flat fee.
Okay. Commissioner Teasom.
You said last year it was a $3 flat rate. I am wondering if increasing to $5, which I'm not opposed to financially, but I do wonder if that will push more cars to park on the street in meters, and if it will have any impact on some of the businesses around there, like, what would be the anticipated, like, would that change user choices?
I think, and this was in discussions with the promoter and some of the businesses downtown, that the $5 fee was not seen as overly onerous, and in fact, the $3 fee was seen as more complicated because you get into making change and all those sorts of things, and so it was highly encouraged moving forward on any special event to try to have even denomination, 5, 10, something like that. But we did not hear any of that concerns. Excuse me, Commissioner Collo?
One odd, one even?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Collo?
That's my question.
Okay. Yeah, I would say, you know, we do have the three-hour throttle on the meters, too, and if you're pushing new visitors in front of those businesses, it's not horrible, you know what I mean? But I think also, too, in the winter, people, you know, might look to that garage, you know, because it's right there. But I do think, yeah, we have to be careful. You know, you don't want, if you make it 200, then people do look for the, you know, they play the parking game. But we'll find out, maybe $5 is a little bit of an impact, and we know that. If we jumped it from 3 to 10, I'd have concerns. Let's try 5, two more bucks, and hopefully we don't have those impacts. If we do have those impacts, then we know for next time, you know?
I think with every special event, there's a little bit of a learning curve, and each year, we tackle it a little bit differently.
Yep, so... Okay. Any other discussion on this one? Anyone brave enough to make a motion? Commissioner Macy?
I move approval with the addition of the surface lots to the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. All right, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Wonderful. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our people. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Hunt moves to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. We'll give her this adjournment. She's like, let's get out of here, get to be with my kids all day tomorrow, I'm going